To the Commissioners' meeting for January 16th, 2023. What I ask you to do is give us just a moment of silence as we start. Thank you very much. I'm asked for a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion has been made to approve the agenda by Mr. Niebel, second by Mr. Stausmit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. There's no need for discussion. Agenda's approved. Like to make a motion or have someone make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 14th, Commissioner meeting?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from December 14th.
I second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kaiser to approve the minutes from the December 14th SIB meeting, seconded by Mr. Niebel. Any discussion? Everyone approve, please?
Aye.
Aye.
All approved, okay. No need to discuss, we'll approve that. Asked for a motion to approve the minutes from our Commissioners' working meeting on January 2nd.
I make a motion, we approve the January 2nd agenda.
So, second?
Minutes, not agenda, but minutes.
I second.
There's a motion made by Mr. Kaiser to approve the Commissioners' national meeting for January 2nd. It was seconded by Mr. Niebel. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there any negative?
No.
Motion carries? It's approved. At this time, I'd like to entertain and ask anyone from the audience if they would like to make owner comments. We have a place over here with a microphone, and if you could limit your comments to about three minutes. Again, this is something we've added to allow you to talk about anything early on before we get to the business of the SIB meeting. Please state your name.
Is it working? Alright, I'm Norman Flowers, property owner and chairman of the lake committee. We've been having some discussions about the handicap dock, or at least a handicapped accessible dock, on our lake, and I have his wing here. There is William, Mr. Mr. Care, so I'll go briefly over the plan. He submitted a plan that several of us have looked at. The plan is not a pure handicap dock, it's a handicap accessible dock. What this plan constitutes of is we on Lake Omaha, will remove the little six-foot square dock that's there, and he'll start a new dock there, and then he angles it out into the lake, making it possible. Now, for the reduction that he would do for no charge, he would take that old dock that he takes out and move it to where we never had a dock, and secure it, repair it, and secure it there for voters to use when they lost their votes and have a dock at times. And then, understanding that it's just a accessible dock, not a pure handicap dock. But anyway, we'll submit the program to the board, and I think Betsy's got a copy of it so she can pass it around, and explain the cost on there. And one little note on there, he'll do this, move the dock for nothing, and he'll do most of the labor for nothing if we don't include a placard on the dock. So you can all look it over, if that's just where we're going, how they got this, see if everybody is in line with accessible dock rather than purely handicap dock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Would anyone else like to address the Commission? Then let's go ahead and move on to the old business portion of the agenda. Now, we had reviewed the budget. Do we want to start with that, or would we like to do what we did in our working session?
I think we probably ought to flip flop it, in my opinion, to make it last.
Okay, so put A as G and just start down the line from B? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am, because it's going to be a little lengthy as we begin to talk about our anticipated 2023 budget.
Okay.
I would say that would mean you go back and not approve the agenda for today.
You gotta modify the agenda.
Go back and make that change since we already approved it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have just automatically done it that way.
Is it okay with y'all if we leave David as approval to the amended agenda and Tony as a second? And we all accept that change? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have an update on the edible control cell. Do you have one, Betsy? Because I have been out there to look at it.
We've received the payment. We haven't cashed the check yet because there's still some documents that I think need to come with it, with the perimeter that space will be. But they have paid, we've accepted the offer, they've paid the $5,000, and we're just waiting on the final documents that'll show the boundaries of the deeds.
Thank you. Any concerns, gentlemen, ladies? Let's move on then. Final approval for the updated employee policy, that's been worked on a couple of times. And I have read it, and I would look for the team to take a look at what they have in front of them, and then we'll move to a discussion point.
If I may mention that Ron brought up earlier at the bottom of page four, I am missing the rest of that sentence. I don't have it in my notes on my computer either. It came from the example of the higher education, so if we've got a copy of that, if we want to read off what the rest of that was, or we can try to push it to the next month's meeting and I can put that in there, it's up to y'all. That is a mistake, it's in there though.
Do you have the, what you, do you, David or Ron, do you have the note, the thing that you handed Betsy? We could just write in that, rest that sentence and go ahead and...
I wish I did.
I might, I might.
David, mine, mine's on my computer, it follows.
If you want to give me the website, I can look it up.
It's fairly lengthy, Betsy, it's about 120-page document. And while I can probably quote some of it, I wouldn't feel comfortable trying to change the wording here without you getting a chance to look at it and without the rest of this. So that may be when we have to move to next month?
How is for me?
Okay.
I'd like to ask from... It's, you don't have, I don't have it with me, I'm sorry.
I have it back at the office, I have the copy that I typed.
We could just, we just move it to old business, or unkindish business for February. Is that okay?
Let's go ahead and do that, move it to next month. Mr. Niebel has been working very hard with a number of people on helping us improve our dock ordinance for Cherokee Village. David, are you in a position now to discuss that?
Okay, I have been working with Charlie, who's the city inspector, and I've gone through and gotten all the documents the city has that we have. And to, there's only one modification I can see that we need to go with the city on in their ordinance. And Charlie walked me through the procedure. First, we have to present it to the zoning and planning commission, and they got to approve it, and then it's got to go to the city attorney, and then it's got to be approved. And then, it gets, if it gets approved by the zoning and planning, then they present it to the city council for approval. Now, there's only one, one section in here that I can see that would involve us, and hopefully we can get with Charlie on that, get this thing moving. The other thing is, is there's been several agreements with the city on the docks. I've got signed documents from them and the city, plus there's diagrams at the city that shows how docks are to be installed. We've had several docks now that have gone in, in between us coming in and the previous Commissioners, that the city should have taken to court because they did not follow the ordinance.
Where's his microphone?
Can everybody hear me?
No, Susan can.
Oh, Susan can, sorry, Susan. Anyway, like I said, there's documentation, there is documentation here. So, and this is a working document right now that I've given all the Commissioners, plus I've gone through and brought up our, how would you call them? The other facilities that Mr. Cooper has built. And to me, it seems like we are the stepchild, because we were the first one. Everybody else has, their documentation is dotted I's, crossed T's, there's no ifs, ands, buts about it. So I presented in here their stuff, so that way the Commissioners can review it. And hopefully, we can get this document done by our next meeting, hopefully. And I will be going with Charlie to the zoning and planning commission the next time and presenting our language change. It's just a couple words and sentences that needs to be put in there. So Sid has a say in how, in what the docks have done and how they're done. Because they got to go to the city to get a permit, and they're supposed to go through us. And that's the way it is done at all the other POAs and SIDS around. So, it's been sidestepped on a few things. Hopefully, we can get this matter resolved.
Any further discussion, Susan?
Any questions?
Joe? Tony? Then I'm not going to interfere with that, let's go on to the next item. Thank you very much, David, for your hard work on that. Because I know I've walked around a lot of the docks and stepped on them and watched them. Waste connection, purchase of land surrounding the duck on Highway 289. Is there anyone here who has an update? I've seen that, I went out there, it used to be the area, I believe, where they had the model airplane flying field. And since I used to crash those pretty regularly, I was excited until I realized we no longer had a club. And I couldn't find my equipment anyway, I think my dad kept it. So, since there's no one here, do we need to table that, team?
I would like to share that after our last meeting, I received three phone calls of property owners who are opposed to us not knowing what the plan is for that specifically. Complaints of the amount of garbage that's brought in from all over the other areas, complaints of the trucks. They just really asked that we look deep and hard before we start selling off something this when it could adversely affect us. I have had no response from waste management, and so I have not pursued it any further. I feel like the ball's in there for it.
Thank you, Betsy. I tend to agree with you after having been out there. I just didn't, I didn't see anybody to talk to either, so... And I didn't get in front of the trucks because they're fast moving, so... With that...
I make a motion, we table this.
Tabled. Until we get further discussion from... So, motion to table this, seconded by Mr. Stausmit. All in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone disagreeing? Motion carries, thank you, David. Do you have an idea what we might? No. The last item before we go into the budget are Commissioner fees and... Oh, sorry.
Hey, forgot Joe.
I apologize to the lake committee and all the people that worked very hard to help us build better fish tanks. Joe?
We have about 30, I would say around 30 Christmas trees that were dropped. Norm secured some of those from a place in Hardy that didn't sell all of them. But since then, Betsy informed me of a man that, at the, out there with the county jail that has prisoners that need work, and so I contacted him and last week, or yeah, it was last week, we had the prisoners come out and they cut two big trailers full of little scrappy cedar trees, which are basically about the size of a Christmas tree, down at the campground in the lower area around the river and that kind of stuff. So a lot of scrub brushy type stuff has been cut, piled on Sid trailers, and it is ready to be put in the lake. That, that is our next issue. Norm and I have discussed that on when we're going to do that. Possibly this week if we can get the weather right to cooperate with us. We're still looking into what we can sync those with, but I have secured a few concrete blocks and things like that, so...
Joe, I've got about, I know over 100 concrete blocks, if you're welcome.
Boy, there we go.
And you are, sir?
I'm Robert Shennell, I see.
Thank you so much, Joe.
I'm glad of that, that'll really help. And here's the other good news, is those guys need work additionally. So, the man in charge of these prisoners said that when we get ready to do this, that he'll call and bring a crew in, we'll load them on a pontoon boat, they'll go out and tie it all up for us, and we'll just tell them where to drop them when they'll do it. So, we get free labor, we got to give them a sandwich or something, but I just think it's going to be awesome. So we're going to try to distribute among all the lakes if, unless we just run completely out of brush and then we'll move on. But I think each lake will get something. That, that's our plan.
Mr. Robert, if you'll tell me after the baby where the guys can go and pick those flops up, I'll send somebody over.
And then I want to ask you in a little while how to spell your name.
Mr. Roberts, how you spell it?
Mr. Roberts.
I think that's a movie, isn't it, Mr. Roberts? I'm sorry, I missed you, Joe, on the Christmas trees. The last one before we move on to the budget review and discussion are Commissioner fees. In the past, the Commissioners were allowed to play golf, get a boat sticker, use the pickleball court, with the exception of paying a little bit to the, to the team that runs the Omaha Health and, what's the last of it, Mark?
Fitness.
Fitness center. Since I'm not fit, I didn't know that. We would propose, and I need a motion, that the Commissioners actually don't have to pay this year for utilizing the facilities.
It's the only thing that we have for doing this job, that's the reason.
Is there a motion that...
I thought we already voted on this last year.
I thought we had already voted, but we need to make it official and put it in the minutes.
I make a motion that the Commissioner fees are waived this year.
Second?
I'll second.
There's a motion made by Mr. Niebel that the Commissioner fees to utilize the SIB facilities as part of the benefit of being a lifelong Commissioner. Tony Stausmit has seconded it. Is there any even disagree or discussion?
Yes. I, I would like to say no to that, because we took this as a volunteer job. We need to be completely transparent with every dime we spend for the amenities and the $800 plus cart fee plus electric cart fee. I think it's just spending money that we could use for the amenities. I'm not a golfer, so it's only cost me $70 or $80 for the boat and the kayaks, but I, I think that it's wrong for us to take any kind of a benefit doing this volunteer job.
Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm prepared to, I pay mine every year, so it's not a big deal, so... To me, but I don't golf either, so that's, that's a different ballgame. I don't guess I really know what the fees are for golfing, but...
Do what?
Well, the trail fees, $134, if I understand that correctly.
$132.
$130, yeah.
$132 trail fee.
And the fee to play golf unlimited is a little over $800. So, personally, that's not very much for the amount of time that we tend to spend. And it's been a benefit for the Commissioners for as long as I can remember, after talking to them and working with them. And I don't believe that we play enough to say that, well, I'm going to have to ask for a vote. Then, all people in favor of eliminating the Commissioner fees, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Eliminating them. Further discussion, Tony, did, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, kind of... In fact, I've seen it both ways, like you said in previous weeks, all Commissioners had this. And some felt like it was, you know, something given to those that gave up, gave their time for this, and then, like Susan said, we did this on a voluntary basis.
Well, Tony, last year, the reason why we did it on a voluntary basis is the three people who were actually elected had already paid all their fees. And so therefore, we did not ask for a refund with the understanding that we would readdress it and that the individuals who are Commissioners would in fact be given that gratuity for being a Commissioner. And that's the November discussion that we had.
But it was going to be discussed, it wasn't decided at that November meeting.
I think the one thing about having it is that it makes us more accessible to people. If we're out there on the golf course, if we're in the...
Lake.
Out there on the lake, if we're here, or if we're at Omaha Center playing and stuff like that, it makes us more accessible. If you continue to use all those, if you use those amenities and use them quite a bit, you know, you're able to be around people and get to know people and get their ideas.
So if Sid doesn't pay your fees, you're not going to use the amenities?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, we would do it, I mean, I play more often. I mean, I play golf more often than I would maybe.
Actually, I don't think you pay the fees, do you, Betsy, for the Commissioners? It's just a gratuity.
I'm sorry, that's the, well...
Susan indicated that she thought that the SIB people would have to pay the fees for any Commissioner to utilize the amenities. And I don't believe that's ever been the case that I've been able to see in the budget.
It'll be $800 out of our income.
Nothing's ever free.
Nothing's free.
I don't, I don't understand that question, Ron, I'm sorry. The employees, it does not affect, if that's what you were saying?
I'm talking about just the Commissioners that might utilize the lakes and the golf course would be given that gratuity and no fee because of the time spent to be a Commissioner.
But when you became a Commissioner, you, you came...
Excuse us, no comments, please. This is between the Commissioners.
But we became Commissioners as volunteers, not taking a paycheck, not taking anything. And in November, when y'all wanted to talk about it, we decided to table it. And I just think it's wrong for us to take anything out of Sid's pocket. And not paying our fees for amenities is taking money out of the amenities pocket. I don't know how else to put it.
Betsy? Do the employees get to use the facilities?
Yes, that is something that y'all were doing.
Right.
That was an employee benefit.
Full-time?
Full-time.
Well, but our part-time employees who work seasonal also take advantage of that benefit while they are employed. So it's not full-time, it's part-time employees as well.
I think what's good for the employees is good for us.
No, it's not. We're not employees, we're volunteer Commissioners.
I think that when, when we signed on for this, and I, I'll be honest with you, I, I had no earthly idea what this would entail, or I really thought we would get together and break our heads and have common sense prevail and all that, and it's been a complete and total nightmare since we got elected to do this. We were elected, and that's fine, and I agreed to do it, and I'm going to stay here until I get kicked out, I guess, but I'm here. And, but I didn't sign on in hopes that I would get free boat stickers or anything like that, didn't know anything about it, don't really care because it's less than 100 bucks to put your boat out there. But I don't know anything about golfing, and it doesn't make me any difference. But I would like to say this, is that the general public needs to understand too that, that we're all learning, that we're not professional Sid people, that this is a nightmare of a job that we volunteered for. So all the hate mail, and the rock throwing, and the spitting, and the anger that we entail daily, and I'm not kidding, daily, needs to stop. And I'm just going to say that and be done with it.
So, Mr. Kaiser, would you allow us then to utilize the facilities at no fee for the Commissioners? To put you on the spot?
I'd just as soon pay for mine, let's take it easy.
And Susan's already said pay for it, David?
Well, I guess I go with the better opinion, I guess we'll pay for it.
Well, you get a vote, do you want...
I withdraw my motion.
Motion to be withdrawn?
Seconded. I'm changing my opinion too.
I second it.
So a new motion is made, the new motion is?
Commissioners will pay their fees.
Seconded.
A motion has been made by Mr. Niebel that the Commissioners will not take advantage of the amenities at a no-cost fee, but rather pay the recommended fees that any property owner who wants to utilize those facilities would pay. It's been seconded by Mr. Stausmit. Any discuss, further discussion? Let's take a vote, I'm roll call, Susan?
I vote for the motion that the Sid Commissioners pay for the amenities.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Niebel?
Yes.
Mr. Stausmit?
Aye.
Motion for the Commissioners to pay for use of all the amenities, whether it be the lake, or the golf course, or the pickleball court, or the tennis courts, or the campground, or any of those other amenities that our employees are able to utilize at no fee, has been approved. Let's go ahead and go to the budget. Let's go ahead and go to the budget. And at this point, I've looked at it quite a bit, but the best person to walk us through that may very well be our general manager. Betsy, would you like to have a microphone?
Yeah, I'll borrow this one here.
Here, Beth, here.
You may have noticed in the hallway that we've got the December 31st. They are the unaudited financials for the end of the year, but they are our financials for the end of the year. So I'm looking for my copy right away. I think that if we go back and look at what we had originally, what we had originally budgeted for 2022, we did very well. We ended up with a $638,000 profit or cash flow for 2020. And a lot of that, some of that, I should say, has to do with the money that we collected that we did not budget for the store damage. Fortunately, we turned right back around and spent those on the roofs where we received those funds for, so that kind of washed there. We have $248,000 that we collected in prepaid assessments. What we did is we put that into a separate account and we will pull 10% of that out for 2023, which would have been what we would normally collect with the levy percentage. So that'll be some money that's showing in here that's gonna be set aside. But I think for all it all, for all of the things we've been able to accomplish for this year with our repairs that we've done, you know, over $600,000 profit is a good year. As I forecast 2023, and we've had an opportunity to kind of review it at our special meeting that we had early in January. There was a couple of items that I had not entered, which was the cost, the expense side for the campground, which should be in the new package that y'all were sent, I guess, end of last week. I had the income side of the campground there, but I didn't have the expense side. So went back and split that up. The way that we handled it last year was we were able to approve our operating budget. Then we knew what our surplus cash was projected and we were able to review capital expenditures from there. So that's kind of the same process that we would look at tonight. The other question that y'all gave me was about the salary increases. In 2022, we had a 2% increase. You asked me to go back and give you a breakdown of two, three, four, and five, which I did. And I think each one of y'all have a copy of that. So that would change out of line from the budget that I've received if you decide to do more than 2%. 2% is what I based my budget on, same as last year. I will tell you that as far as our surplus cash goes right now, and I've said this in the past when we talked about, when I talked about, what I felt like Sid's responsibility was and that at the beginning of each year, we should have a set amount of money that we start with as operating and that our goal each year should be to spend the money that we have collected. That's why our amenities look like they do, because we haven't given them the attention that they need. And now that we've got some money to do it, I hope that we can all agree that that's where our money needs to be spent. As of December 31st, our surplus cash is $1,161,000. That's amazing. That is absolutely amazing. And we have an Omaha pool that's gonna be a $2 million repair. You know, we've got some big-ticket items, but we've got something to start with and something we can add to it. And so I feel like we're moving in the right direction. And I hope that in 2023, we're gonna be able to see more things to our eyes than we've done this year with electrical, with HVAC and roofs and things that we didn't get to see. I would love for us to be able to see more of the cosmetic things and more upgrades to our facilities, to our computer equipment, to the way that we do business. So, and that being said, this is our budget that I'll come back to. Y'all, I would say ask questions. Is there anything?
We have talked a little bit about during our working session about some of those improvements. Until we get the Omaha pool, I know that there are some activities for the Thunderbird pool. But one thing that I didn't see in there was a full-time lake person round them for 12 months. Normally, we let them go at the end of the season. And this year, it might have been beneficial to have that individual. We didn't have a person other than an employee or a commissioner going around Thunderbird in Omaha. And we did see a few individuals who were, probably shouldn't have been there. That would have been nice to have a lake safety officer helping us with that. So that's the only thing that I might consider adding as an improvement. It may or may not be, but, and it may be that person does one thing for a three-month period. You know, it's, it's an on-call person too, if we had an issue that could, that couldn't reach a commissioner perhaps, and they might not have been able to reach our general manager or any of our other employees.
You know, I think at one time, we had spoken, David could probably speak on this, is that we had talked about trying to bring on some of those reserve officers or off-duty officers that could do more enforcing than what our lake safety people can do. And so that would be something that we could absolutely consider looking more into, I think, what that cost would be.
I have talked to, I've talked to Judge Countess, and he made a recommendation that him and I and Sheriff Presser get together to discuss this.
Awesome.
They're, they're open to having a deputy on with lake safety.
Awesome.
As long as we pay him.
Right, right. And when we look at our capital stuff, something else about lake safety is we need to give some attention to the pirate ships. How can we enforce when we look like we're the ragged pirates chasing them out there going 20 miles an hour in our little deaky boat? So, in the capital stuff that I gave in that separate package, I put some funds in that direction as a suggestion to improve one or both of our boats.
I think all the lake safety people would enjoy that.
Absolutely.
Especially if we could put the silent on there. We're not gonna weaponize them though, right?
Water guns.
Water guns. With that, I think all of our commissioners have had an opportunity to really scrutinize the budget from our working session. And I believe we're all pretty confident in making, asking for a motion to approve the proposed 2023 budget and then move on.
I still, we gotta make an amendment here.
I'm sorry.
For the increase for the employees, what we're gonna do with that.
Thank you, David.
So as I mentioned before, if you'll look on the little sheet that I gave you, that basically takes all of the categories of the total salaries from each category, the bottom one being all of them, all departments put together. And then I just did the 2%, the 3%, the 4%, and the 5%.
For the audience, the difference between a 2% and a 5% increase is like $27,000. Not a huge amount, it's like $21,000 for that. Keep them in, if you will, at a 5% rate. So it's not really a whole lot of money from what we're seeing here on the document. Thank you, Betsy, for running that through.
I would like to say cost of living has shot up crazy. And I have talked to some friends of mine that are in charge of employees and the finance and so forth at Emerson. And Emerson, I think it was up in the 7% range, but I think they've settled back lower than that. But lots of places are doing that. So I don't think an increase, I think an increase bigger than 2% would be appropriate, in my opinion, so. I'm looking everything over. I have to say, we're gonna have to go for, I'd go for the 5%. We gotta keep good employees. Tony, you got any thoughts? Susan?
How about if we go with 3% this year and talk about doing the evaluations at a time in the future? And then next year, move it up a percent? Because I have a feeling that, that nobody's going anywhere, and maybe I'm wrong. We've been clicking along at 2% now for a long time. And sure, things are tough. I mean, eggs at Harps today were, I don't even wanna tell you how much they were, but I, it just seems like a lot of money to me. And I know it's only $35,000 to the whole budget, but I, it just seems like a lot of, a big change, a big, a big change. And I would like to see if the employees will work any harder for an increase? Or are they just showing up every day because they're happy to have a job? And they're struggling like everybody else on a fixed income? Or, you know, it just seems like a big jump at one time?
Just a, the government employees just.
Well, we're not government employees.
I know, but they're technically government employees, basically, right? People that work for us?
Yeah, okay, city.
Government employees got a 4.6 issue.
Okay, then, then I would go with 3% or 4%. And next year, bump it up again if we, if we want to. Because we had also spoken at the working meeting about instituting some kind of a bonus system, which might be quite lucrative if we, thank you, if we come up with that.
Since we, we got something I wanted to say in 5%, you're saying 3%, why don't we compromise and go 4%?
That'd be fine.
And this is across the board, correct?
Across the board.
Part-time, full-time, okay.
Is it part-time too?
Part-time, across the board, every single employee, including the general manager.
I would be happy, 4% is where I was at, so I'd be happy with that.
Okay.
We're all, we're all okay with 4?
Yeah.
I make a motion, we go with 4% for the employees' cost of living adjustment.
I say.
David, Nabel made a motion for approving the employee pay by 4%. Mr. Tony Stollsmith seconded it. Any further discussion? Let's vote. Susan?
Yes.
Joe?
Aye.
David? Motion carries. Vote to give the employees a 4% raise. Are there any employees in here who would vote for more? Thank you very much.
I'm the only employee here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That really finishes up our approved agenda, even with the small change that we made to talk a little bit about the budget.
Yeah, one thing to ask about the budget, was there anything included about the sprinkler systems?
Yeah, yeah, she's got that on her.
You'll go to the three-page. It starts with the capital items bids. Those are the items that I suggest that we consider as additional improvements. I believe it was, I don't have it ever in front of me. What was our, what was my projected on my budget for our income? Our surplus cash?
$1,001,000.
I think it's $991, is what I'm thinking we would be at.
$991 is correct. From what I recall, seeing this morning.
Right, so $756 is what I'm suggesting that we spend out of these two pages.
Got it.
All right, now. Dorsey Painting is a company that I've used and we're gonna have to get a third paint bid. Mr. Dorsey has had a fatal accident. We'll have to remove his bid. This happened just in the last five days. So I've got a number from someone else that is gonna be coming out to give us another bid for the interior painting. Are y'all looking at that capital bid sheet? So Omaha furnishings, I would like permission to spend $5,000 and put that furniture in the lobby in the surplus sale. I'm gonna place the couch, the four-side chairs, two-end tables, and make that a nicer place again. Miniature golf, we got a quote for $10,000 for the carpet. Now, I had a quote for $5,000 for the carpet, but it never came. And when I ordered it, they said it may never come because it was very inexpensive and it was, and it's something that we are going to install. So we are only going to purchase the carpet. We will have the carpet installed in-house. And that would bring the miniature golf at Omaha Center back up. I mean, I know we don't have the pools out there, but I still think we have a pretty good draw with the fitness center, with pickleball. And when the weather's nice, I think that miniature golf would be an added amenity for a very low cost.
Because didn't we also, where we're doing miniature golf, didn't we talk about that game that you use the little?
Shuffleboard?
No. Little, little bags of sand or peas and you slide.
Cornhole. We could do cornhole. And where we really should do cornhole is that Thunderbird on the old shuffleboard courts where the concrete's all cracked up. That wouldn't matter with cornhole. Can't play shuffleboard with the concrete cracked up. And the Lions Club in 2022 made two sets of boards for us. We would just need to purchase the bags. So that would definitely be something that we could also offer. The North Golf Course, the interior painting, which is inside of here. I put the flooring as a building repair replacement, not really a capital item. Probably, we could say the painting would go under that same thing, but I wanted to pull it from capital funds, so that's why I put it there, which will be that third bid. Irrigation, now, this is in addition to the pumps. So we have paid 50% down on the pump for the North Course. Everything's been approved and we hope before April comes that that new system is gonna be in, it's gonna be installed. And we will not be paying those guys to manually water the golf course again this year. But part of our irrigation issues is that we have with a decoder system. And when one of those decoders goes bad, everything behind it goes bad. And they run about $4,500. They're killing us, killing us. I went back to Keeling, I complained and complained. That's where we bought the system from. You know, we've talked about in the past, we still owe for the irrigation system. So to turn around and have to upgrade it and still owe on the old one is a hard pill to swallow. But we have in our capital accounts for the golf course, $233,000. So we should either pay off the old, but it's a 4.5% interest rate, which we probably won't get right now, or pay for the new and not finance it. That would be my suggestion. We've got a little. it. That would be my suggestion. We've got a little time to talk about that. But what you're seeing on here from Keeling is north and south course taking out all the decoders and going with a different irrigation system that in three years we will have paid for, because we're not spending twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars a year on buying new decoders for a system we're still handling.
Is this the Rainbird system then?
It is. And I tried looking at other systems. I called around to other courses. I spoke to other reps, and they said the Rainbird system is it. But the one we currently have is just an old system. So that's what that is, this one there. And of course, these items, we do not have to determine today, but these are my suggestions for our capital improvements. Now, this next item, the Thunderbird pool rehab, if we don't make a decision on this quick, we're not gonna have a pool at all this summer. And there's no way around it. I've gotten two bids in, in writing. I've got a third one that I met today. The pool bid is Mid-South Renovations. They're out of Missouri, and they're the only people out of everyone I've called over a year that actually gave us something in writing that we could actually work with, and they have committed that if we can get our concrete work done, they can have our pool open and finished before Memorial Day weekend, which would be amazing.
Yes.
Amazing. The concrete work, that, that pool bid, and I think I've given these to you before from Mid-South, it gives you three different textures, you know, from plaster to the intermediate to the, the glass. I mean, listen, it's thirty-five thousand dollars more to go with the best material, and when you're going from two-hundred thousand to two-hundred-and-thirty thousand, I don't think it's the time to get cheap. Let's do it right. If it's gonna be sixty more years before we get to do it again, let's do it right and spend the money. And that's would be my suggestion. We would end up spending two-sixty-eight with the pool company, and about sixty-eight with the concrete and the coping. And what we're proposing with the concrete, and I don't, I'm not sure how many of y'all go to the Thunderbird pool, but as you come down the last set of steps to where the kiddie pool is to your left, there's a fence in front of you that goes to the adult pool, we would start at the bottom step with a four-inch overlay. It'll have the rebar, it'll have the mesh. They will lift the drains, they will lift the, the ports for the pool, skimmer baskets. They will do the coping all the way up to the pool, and then the pool company will handle all of the inside, the tile work on the inside, and, and finishing off, putting our lights back, all of that stuff. So we're looking at three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, three-thirty-five for the Thunderbird pool. But it would be in the best shape it's been fifty years. So that's something we gotta settle pretty quick. If we keep going down the list, Flathead Docks gave us a cost of thirty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-forty dollars to add ten additional uncovered slips. It would take us a few years to get that money back, but we have a wait list on, on the Thunderbird Marina, and so I feel like that would be something we spend a little now, and we get our money back and make money in the future.
Now, what was those docks gonna be made of? The metal or wood?
Oh, let's see, I want this.
They're gonna be the larger opening ones too, right?
Yes, that's, that's the main objective, is that most of the new, newer boats are wider than what our slips are. So, you know, we've had a few people come in, and we've taken off the little metal pieces that come out that we have our rubber on, and they're putting out their own little rubber flotation to keep from hitting the dock. And then we have, you know, the bigger docks are at Sequoia. And so that's why most people wanna go that direction. But I think if we could get ten more slips at the Thunderbird, we would be in a good spot. It looks like I've only got a house in here. I'll get that information for you.
Okay.
And I wanna say it was metal. From the top, from off the top of my head, I believe that it was metal because it was uncovered. Encapsulated flotation devices, it would extend out at the end of where it stops now, so it would kinda go closer towards where the concrete courtesy dock is, to that area.
How far are you gonna extend it out? Do you, ten slips, be what?
Ten slips, probably twelve.
Five hundred.
Should we, should we put the dock, the dock thing, move it forward so Betsy could bring her packet? I mean, we, we, we know that we wanna spend some of this money, right?
Yeah, let's bring it.
And we would need to get a second bid. You know, these are just my wish list of how to spend it to your money and make things a little bit better.
Okay.
And I believe that some of our property owners wish this too, if you get two-hundred calls a day still, or, 'cause I know I get quite a few, and people stop me. And I know Joe can't go into Carol's Lakeview Restaurant without a question or two.
Well, you know, I have to say, I don't necessarily, wouldn't say that I've got property owners calling, asking about, telling us what their wish list is. We do get a lot of support of people asking about the Omaha pools. And, you know, it was really my heart's desire to have, this year is the fiftieth year of Omaha, to have a pool, and have a great event out there, and bring families back together. But it, it can happen. And so, you know, to me, if we can keep Thunderbird rolling another year, Omaha's not out of the question. We're just not to the point to really be able to invest in that yet.
You mean, we didn't win the one-point-three-five, you know, trillion dollars?
We did not. But I can tell you, every day going to work in the cold of the winter, to open up the doors at Omaha and feel the heat's working, to not have the ceiling leaking, to not come in and move the trash cans around every time it rains, that's huge. That's huge. And, and that means that that damage is stopping. That water is not continuing to run and leak. It causes more damage. So, you know, we're, we're making progress, but the pool just didn't, I cannot get anyone who is not scared to do that.
So Betsy, what is the, to fix this Thunderbird thing, and what, what would be involved in just saying, let's fix it before it goes to pot? And down the road, we're gonna be in a, I mean, worse shape than we would be if we could fix it. And is it gonna put us in a bind to fix it financially?
I, I think financially, we're looking at a third of what we're projecting as our cash flow. I think that we've got the funds to back it up, to do it. I think that, you know, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand is a scary number. And there's still, there's mechanical issues that could come up. I mean, it doesn't mean that it's a, a brand-new pool from, you know, the surface to the ground, but we're not gonna make it through another summer with all the concrete busting up. You almost gotta wear your shoes in the pool. It's so rough where we've gone in and patched the cracks, and patched the cracks, and patched the cracks. I think that this is gonna be, in my opinion, this is what is gonna need to take us into the next twenty-five years at least, and give us time to focus on Omaha's pool and get those out.
So guys, here's my question to the commissioners. Do we fix this Thunderbird pool and go down in twenty-five or thirty years as the, the five cornballs that decided to go ahead and spend the money and fix it? Because the pool will be right in thirty years. Ain't none of us gonna be here in thirty years. Let's, let's, I mean, if we are, we're not gonna be swimming.
Truly, truly.
My, my opinion...
You might be out swimming with the car.
Right. I've, I've listened to it, and I've heard it, and I hate, like, everything to spend money. You just don't know how hard it hurts to spend it. But we have it, and it would be my opinion that we spend that three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, let's fix that Thunderbird pool and move on, and then figure out what we can do about Omaha. Let's get it fixed. I would agree with you. That's my opinion.
And I, I agree. That would be my discussion also.
It's used a lot, from what I've seen. And I've been up there myself a lot, during summer with the kids and stuff. So I just think there's a lot of people using it. It's a great view. It's a beautiful area. It's a beautiful spot. You know, it's nice to keep it up. So there are people on the lake that can see a nice pool up there too.
And then we can, once it's done, and it's, like, you've already contracted to get people to do it, and that's out of our hair. And then let's concentrate on what we can do to get this Omaha thing going. But in the meantime, we haven't let Thunderbird deteriorate to the point that we can't fix it.
Amen.
Or we're all gonna wanna pull our hair out next year, like, why didn't we fix it?
Plus, we have a lot of exercise clubs, since we can't use Omaha, we have Thunderbird. So it's constantly used, it almost every day, I believe, almost.
Monday through Friday, we have the swim club in there. And, you know, I have to say, I don't know if anyone hears from the swim club. We had a rocky start last year, and we ended with love for everyone. So I am so glad that, that just shows that change can happen, and we can all still get along and move forward. And so, yes, I'm excited to have them back again this year.
So as a commissioner, the way I understand our job description is, I move to make a motion that we spend the three-hundred-and-thirty thousand or whatever the figure would be. If it's gonna be much more than that, you're gonna have to come back to us...
I will.
...with additional figures. But I would make a motion that we move to spend the money to fix the Thunderbird pool before it goes down the drain. And I'd do it as quickly as we can do it. That's my motion.
A motion has been made by Mr. Kaiser to spend the money recommended by our general manager to repair and enhance the Thunderbird pool to extend its lifespan. It's been seconded by Mr. Tony Stolzner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Yay! Thank you.
We have a little bottle at the door, so you can put your dollars in.
We're gonna all need a stiff drink after spending that kinda money, but anyway.
Hey, Betsy, now...
Yes, sir.
Has Mid-Americ Pool looked at Omaha at all, or has anybody looked at it?
They have. They have.
What was their estimate over there?
They didn't give us a written estimate. He came out, he looked at it, he...
Shook his head down.
Had another person he wanted to consult with on, on changes and things about it, trying to accommodate it. You know, I, I, again, I think scared is the appropriate word, is that people look at that and say, God, we've got all this concrete that is obvious. We have hollowed points underneath it, very dangerous. Breaking that up is gonna be very dangerous. Filling in the diving pool, expanding the family pool, welding, you know, they stored the chemicals at Omaha in the little rock building where the metal beams overhead have completely rusted out. It's, it's unsafe to go inside of there. There, there's gotta be some pretty big changes, not to mention that we backflow our water into Lake Omaha. That cannot happen anymore. So there's gonna have to be some big changes to it. But I, I don't think that we're completely without that, that Hawks Baker person from St. Louis works with Joe, who works with the Thunderbird pool quote, and that they still want to do something and come back to us. It's just not gonna happen before Memorial Day. This can happen before Memorial Day.
Correct.
Call him. We'll wait right here.
He'll be waiting for me to call him in the morning, for sure. The other areas that I had put in here on my wish list, we talked about Mr. Flowers and the ADA dock at Omaha, Base Hard campground, twenty-five thousand more to add seven more of the fifty, thirty, twenties, which would give us fourteen total. And then I'd like to spend about a thousand dollars on each one of those spots for some rock for leveling the, the rigs when they come in. They need a fire pit, they need a grill, and they need a picnic table. I think that would completely outfit each one of those spots. And for a thousand dollars, we could build those picnic tables, we could get some rings, and, and we've got the grill stands, we just need to replace the grills. So I'd like to, to see another forty thousand between those two items invested into Base Hard.
And that'll be perfect for the eclipse.
Right, right on time before 2024. It would give us fourteen. We still have some tent camping places. That just continues to improve the campground down there for items that we need.
Please tell me how long a thing can park at Base Hard? How, can you drive a bus thing? I, I have a nephew that wants to come visit, and he drives a bus.
I could not tell you what the longest one is. I believe they're thirty-four feet. I mean, I think you can buy them.
Could we fit a bus down there? Do y'all know? Just...
Should be able to.
Yeah, there's some big fifth wheels down in there.
I've seen some huge ones in there, but I don't know what their actual footage is.
Well, I told them about it.
I know you can pull in behind your car that's got three bedrooms now. That's crazy.
Okay.
And the last thing I had on here was ten thousand dollars to lake safety boat upgrades. That was, this is my wish list. Seven-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand is all of my capital items that I just mentioned that enclose the pool. And those are just my wish list items. They're not things really, other than the pool y'all have already voted on, but things that in the future, we'll get more bids, we'll get more information about, and kinda open the discussion of how to spend our extra money.
And we need to figure in there the money that we just gave everybody a raise for to take that money out of it. Okay.
I'll make sure we change that around before we decide it for the final.
I think one of the cheaper things in this list is that ADA dock at Omaha.
Right.
Even though it's not like a majorly-used lake, but I'm there a lot fishing, and there's lots of families that just pull up and get out there and fish. And there's, I, I've seen some folks that actually are in wheelchairs, but they're parking on the grass, and, and you almost think, you know, hey, do I need to put a rock and chalk you up before you... No, because you're gonna sink right in the water if you don't watch it. So it, it would be, as long as this dock wouldn't infringe on the movement of boats coming through the lake or whatever. And I think Norm has worked with this guy enough to know that it'll get out there. Plus, we gain a little courtesy dock over a shanute. I'd be all for doing something like this. It's, it is, it is set up for people that are with disabilities. It is not a complete and total handicap dock, which involves putting little wooden bars about five to six inches apart around the entire thing, and then little shelf things over the side, and it sort of cages it in where even a squirrel would have a harder time getting through it. So I, this is much better, much more pleasing to the eye, and it could have multi-use. Lots of people could get on it, handicap folks, regular folks. And then us old disabled fat guys can tie our boat to the edge of it when we get our truck in the water. I, I, I think it's a good idea. That's just my opinion.
What size is this dock you're talking?
I have one question about shanute. Well, I have, I have an observation, and then I have a question. There's a reason why there's not a dock there already for all these years.
The boat ramp goes right here.
And I wonder if it's because the right of the boat rail comes down to the spillway right there. So you wouldn't want to put a dock in front of that spillway, and then you've also got people that swim right there. So where would you put a courtesy dock?
It would be just on the other side of that gravel boat ramp. So not, not, not where the spillway is, but the opposite side is.
So when you come down the boat ramp, if you're looking at the lake, you would go to the left, like, towards where that cove is?
Yeah, yeah, right there.
So would we need to clear something to be able to get out of that dock, or would it just be a dock that a boat would pull to?
No, you could clear out a little bit, but there's some big slate-looking rocks right there in that area, so...
The problem...
It really wouldn't be a big deal. We might get the prisoners to chop us a couple of trees down or clean that up. But it would, I would hate for it to become a swimming platform, you know, but it could be a...
It has. Last summer was very active with swimming.
It, it could be a multi-use thing, but we absolutely don't have to use it there because that's just a freebie. So that's something we'd probably need to think about and entertain before we say, oh, yeah, go down. He's given the dimensions of that dock.
I have completely lost control.
Excuse me.
Oh, are you red?
No, it's green.
Oh, I, I make a motion that we approve the ADA dock at Omaha.
Second. Second?
I'll second that, yeah.
Motion's been made by Mr. Niebel to approve the expense and the development of an ADA dock at the Omaha Lake. It's been seconded by Mr. Kaiser. Any other further discussion?
We, we've had, maybe a little discussion, we've had somebody else go out to Omaha and look at some different places, maybe to put it instead of right there, somebody that took a transit with a, however, whatever the words are you use to, to check level and.
Tran.
You know what I'm talking about? And anyway, I, I agree totally that we should do it, but instead of going with this, this idea that the way it's written right here, I think we oughta hold off and get this, it was just one of those fortuitous, I was talking to somebody, and they said, well, let's go look at this, that, and the other thing, so, uh, when I get that piece of mail, I'd like to show it to Mr. Flowers, because it's the same kinda thing, it's just a different, just over here a little bit. But, but yes, I want, I think that it's a good idea to, to build this dock.
But where were they suggesting putting it, not in this spot?
Well, instead of, instead of with the concrete place where it is now, move it over, go, go down the sidewalk like you're going to the, where you'd pu- park the boats, and as soon as the, the sidewalk ends, you go up onto the dock, and there's that fence, maybe open this first thing and put a dock out there, so that, because it would be a whole lot less, um, angle.
Elevation.
Elevation, and the angle that's in this one is on the outside edges of what's approved for ADA. And even though we're not gonna go be completely compliant with ADA, if we could get a less of an angled slope, maybe going down that sidewalk and up on the dock.
It's, uh, it's ADA compliant with accessible.
On the outside edges of it, though.
He told me it was ADA accessible.
It, it, it is.
For accessible.
On the out, on the outer limit. Yeah, I, I'm not fussing about the, the.
So let me ask this question, can we approve that we wanna do this and at this price range, and just not yet approve the plan on how we're gonna do it? I think whatever is, is going to be a final drawing of what everyone agrees. And as long as we're not gonna go over what the cost is that he's already given, I mean, is that acceptable? To say, let's move forward, but we just haven't approved the plan?
On this, on this plan, too, there's, uh, two options for different amounts of floats. But on this plan, the labor is free.
Right, right.
And so we need to take that into consideration, because he has on the plan, and I have here, and you, and the one you have, has an additional twenty-five hundred dollars for labor, so we're looking at six, seven thousand dollars there.
Well, I think we just need to maybe meet with Mr. Wayne and go back out there and get the final drawing, and, I mean, I don't feel like he's gonna come back and say, oh, now I wanna charge you for labor, I think that he understands what, that we wanna move forward with this, so let's talk to him and get that final plan approved.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
We need to put this on for next meeting, let's ask for a motion to table this, please.
I table this, I would like to table this motion.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Say.
Yeah, motion to table this activity for the ADA potential dock in Omaha until the February SID general meeting. I believe that concludes our agenda and includes our working area. Do you have something else, Mr. Stausch? David? Joe? Susan?
No.
Um, we do have an opportunity here to open the floor for property owners that would like to address the commission. Please state your name, and we'll kind of limit it to about three minutes, please.
I've got my time. Okay, you'll just take a green one.
We got a green one.
Mine, mine was green, too.
I'm Art Ritter, I'm property owner. I have a question.
I'm sorry, I missed your name, sir.
Art Ritter.
Mark Ritter.
Art.
Art, Art.
He's my neighbor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
We can hear you.
Art.
Art Ritter.
Thank you.
I'm a property owner, my question to the commissioners is you're allowing the city to control boat docks. Is that correct?
No.
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 No?
With the proposed, the proposed that we're going to present to the city is before a dock owner gets a permit from the city, it has to be approved by SID first.
Why do you need a permit from the city when it's on SID property?
It is construction, anything in construction has to go by the city ordinances.
Even though it's on private property?
Yes.
So when we do the pool and everything, they have control over that? Construction, anything that we do, they're gonna have control over construction?
Yes, we have to follow the rules and guidelines on everything, as everybody else. Go ahead, what?
Do you have anybody who have a green one?
I just turned hers off. He'll come back.
So to answer your question, Art.
Mr. Ritter, Mr. Ritter, Ms. Betsy's trying to talk to you.
To answer your question, the contractor that we hire will have to pull the permits that the city requires to do the repairs, yes. And I think, in my opinion, that's to our advantage, because it gives us kind of a layer of protection. If we have a problem, then we've got the city to go back to, to, to help us, so I don't, I'm not upset about it.
In my research, all the POAs, all the other Cooper developments are POAs. We're SID.
Use the microphone.
But, but in those developments, they're in cities, too, and in their rules and bylaws, it states at the city level, too, that it has to be approved by the Property Owners Association before they can build a dock. So if you go to Bella Vista or Hot Springs and look at their rules and regulations, or the cities at those sites, it states the same thing, that's all we're asking the city for.
Okay, then what else do they have control over, all construction?
Yes.
Yes.
At your house, you have to have a permit, and they have to come and inspect it.
That's right, but we're talking about SID, not me as a personal property owner, we're talking about SID.
We have to follow the ordinances, too, the SID.
So whatever we do, construction-wise, we have to get approval.
Yes.
So the city controls SID.
No.
No. That, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter, for your assessment.
Hi, I'm Scullners, I have, uh, three comments, uh, one is, you know, uh, I know there's sometimes there's this us versus them mentality, I heard it today from the commission. You know, we're all here volunteering in different ways to try and help this work, right? And we, and I think a great example is, I've given some comments, uh, and then got some great feedback from the commission, and tried to help, you know, make things efficient and transparent and so forth. And I think there's been some great improvements, uh, in communication and transparency, uh, over time. And I just wanna, I appreciate, you know, part of we, we put up with you, you put up with us, but we're all, we're all the same neighbors, right, you know, so, uh, and, and, and sometimes when there's a disagreement amongst people in the audience, you know, it's not that they're trying to be rude, it's just that they realize they may have been excluded. And an example would be, and I really appreciate that we have comments before the meeting gets started, but if you look at our whole business for this meeting, under sub G, it says commissioner fees. Well, I've had nothing in common about commissioner fees in advance of this meeting, because frankly, I don't even know what commissioner fees are, I don't know what we're charging y'all for being here. Um, if it is said commissioner gratuitous, uh, approval, or something that more described what y'all were trying to decide what to do with your gratuity, I think there would have been, I'm really, can't speak very well, but I think there'd been a few comments that would have been brought up. So, so what happens is, is, you know, everyone kinda felt like that was a conversation, then you've got, it looked apparent, right, optics, it looked like a politician was voting in the race for them, so. And I knew that wasn't, wasn't technical, okay, I'm just trying to point that out. Uh, the second thing is, as a stakeholder and a, a, uh, resident of, uh, of, of, within SID Cherokee Village, is there's, uh, our general elections in November clearly defeated a proposed village in race. And the reason I bring that up is I know we can't control special elections, but as a SID, we've gotta be very worried about other agencies trying to pass very large bills like the school district is trying to do, because Cherokee Village accounts for seventy-five percent of the tax revenue uh, for the district, and so what I'm getting at is that we need to be concerned as SID, because we're having trouble getting lots sold already, and trying to improve and have more ass- assessments to get more money to build up SID. If we get near twenty-five, thirty percent tax levy on these properties, we're not gonna be able to grow and expand. And I'm not telling people how to vote, I'm just saying, I hope SID has a plan to realize that if this goes through and other things in the future, we're gonna be looking at how much our assessments, and if we price ourselves out of the community, and, uh, I'm quite, these are my three minutes, but thank you again for your time.
Uh, Richard Sackett again, uh, my name wasn't right the last time, but my subject's still the same. Uh, so Richard Sackett, when, when they put it in the news, I didn't recognize myself. So I must not spoke clearly the last time. Um, I still wanna talk about that tax, because I thought that it would come up as a budget item, because it's a budget item for me and the people that I represent, and just to get the significant, that's whether we ever get money back, if the taxpayer ever gives money back for the taxes that they previously paid, I guess, as you sell lots, and I thought it would come up as a budget item, because I, you know, I don't even see it on the whole business or anything, I just wanna keep it out there that we continue to find out, because I've got lots of people asking me, and the total of that is about thirty-four thousand dollars, so it's important to each one of them, because they got one segment of that. Uh, so I would like, when you're doing budget items, it seems that we might have a report on, on a piece of paper of what came in and what might come someday back to those people that have paid substantial fees. Is that clear?
Do you wanna address that, Betsy?
Um, I, I may can help with that, we recently had a call with Matt Bishop, who was the attorney that represented us in the settlement. Um, over the last several months, we've spoken about basically the holes that were in the settlement, not really giving clear direction on some of the things that, that are required. And one of those items was that by the fifteenth of January of this year, any funds that we had received from the sale of lots from July first through December thirty-first, minus twenty percent that would go to the attorney, would go to a fund and would be, uh, distributed between the property owners who had requested the refunds. I can't tell you today the number of property owners, I can tell you that the dollar amount, the total dollar amount of those refunds were a little over two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. We began selling lots in twenty-twenty-three, we were eligible to start selling lots on July first, but because we have no clue as to what we're doing, we have not done a very good job. We have less than eight hundred dollars in lot sales from July first to December thirty-first. So during this call that we had about ten days ago with the attorney that represents us uh, at our meetings, and with Matt Bishop, who represented us for the settlement, we discussed this, and they're supposed to be, um, they're requesting a hearing with the judge to go in and clarify how it is that they think we're supposed to do the eight hundred dollars minus a hundred and sixty to two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars worth of refunds. There's not a, the, the postage is gonna cost more than a half a penny that each one of those property or owners would require. Mr. Bishop's suggestion was, because that dollar amount was so low, that they do it on an every-two-year, still using the seventh year as the final year, if those refunds are not paid out, then they will be dissolved.
And my suggestion is that you put something in writing, so we could see, so we can even talk about the problem. The last time, I wanted to talk about the problem a little bit, too, and suggested I would volunteer and others, and you said you already got your thing for the real estate community that you needed. However, I think your methodology of selling lots needs a great deal of help, is the best way I can say it, and, uh, and you'll never pay it back, at the way you're probably going at it. I even have customers that I'm waiting for you to solve it, because I wouldn't have my worst enemy by the way you're showing it right now, because it's not good advice, and so you have a long ways to go, and I'm willing probably to help on that, and, and suggest that you should ask other ideas, maybe you've already discussed them, but I've not been privy to that, nor have I seen a report, and that's why I keep coming back here, not that I want to, but I think we need a report on what several people, I probably read, represent thirty people, that think they oughta get some money back. So if there was something reported, I'd have something give them, and that they would better understand that I'm not just stiff-arming them, saying, you probably have your money back, which is pretty much what everybody expects.
I, I would suggest that, that you send those thirty people to SID, and, and let us explain to them how the settlement reads and how that works.
And, and because I put it in, you won't talk to them probably, because you'll look it up and say they're not up there.
Well, well, you couldn't have requested a refund for someone else, the person, the property owner.
Specifically, and the attorney accepted it specifically, it says, if you paid it, you're the one to get it back, I paid it as an escrow account of these other people, like a bank. So therefore, I submitted to them, and if only if you ever give it back to me, will they get it back.
Okay, well, again, the settlement was done through the attorneys and through the people who were involved, and there's so many items in that settlement that are not clear that have led us to the place that we're going back to the judge and asking for some clarification. Um, I think that you're saying that we need help selling lots? Yes, sir, anybody, any real estate agent that can set, is willing to sell lots?
You haven't really fixed it, so they can or are going to do, anyhow, that belongs outside of this discussion. I'm just, uh, wanting to break it back up again.
Okay.
That, uh, I think you need some help on console, if you've only got eight hundred dollars, you seriously need them.
Well, and we're not real estate agents, and so.
I know, and so you, you.
So that really ties our hands.
That's pretty much my point, is you need to know how to enable, so that the real estate agents will work with you and help you sell those lots, that is what I'm suggesting, that we work together, the community works together to achieve it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Peter Martin, how are we this evening? I, uh, wanna congratulate you on your noble decision to not give yourselves, um, credit for, uh, being able to use all the amenities, uh, like working tough over the home, being a politician in a SID Cherokee Village that does not get paid, even to the rest of us on the land. I understand where you're coming from, uh, but my question is, last meeting, like you said, there were some things brought up, and it would be nice to get some more information on this, I'm not expecting an answer right now, but then we're gonna be reassessed and shark company next year, and then the year after, informed account. Now, my understanding of what assessment is and what we're getting assessed for is different with SID. I only thought we could be assessed as SID members on the, on the structures and stuff that you have, lakes, uh, Thunderbird's, Omaha's, after this place, all courses. But that wouldn't equate to the same. But that wouldn't equate to the same assessment as I got on my piece of property. So if the assessment is assessing your amenities, then there were any improvements, that's what we would pay on, I'm assuming. But there was a mention that if a person already paid their assessments for the seven years, that, well, if it goes up, then we're going to come back to them and ask them for more money, and I don't see how you can do that, and that's where my question lies, is it's, it's kind of a convoluted theory that was just mentioned at the last meeting. It'd be nice to have some sort of discussion on how you guys are going to perpetuate yourselves once these seven years end, if there's going to be more fees, or if we're going to build something new so we can reassess us for a new item, or we're going to improve it so much that we have a mind issue or something of that sorts that we're paying off. Thank you.
I can only speak to the part of the conversation with Matt Bishop also included that question, and he said that the assessment as of 2021 is what stands, regardless if it goes up or it goes down, that that was the assessment that was used for the 2021 settlement, and that that was the fixed number. And so there's additional education that we're going to be sharing with the counties so that they don't continue to try to change those appraised land values.
So for the next seven years, for the next seven years, the people that have not paid, it's going to be based on that number that's already paid?
The next seven years are based on the, the 2021 appraised land values as they were. They will not be adjusted.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can I just say one thing?
Please do.
That, I mean, just to give you quick feedback, that right, right now, if you look at an assessed value of any property, it's going to tend to the exact value of which year did your assessment. If they raise any values on land, and they probably will, that figure will no longer be in the database, so there may be a problem with what you just said, how you even keep track of what that figure was on all those lots.
So one of the things that we spoke about in the last meeting was about the software that we're looking into upgrading, because a parcel, not a property owner, has that assessed value. So that's what we're keeping up with. Regardless of who the owner is, that parcel, and we could say nine hundred dollars is the assessed value, if, if the owner pays an annual amount, we have a amortization schedule that we show what that payout would be. But if it's sold, we'll be able to track, so that is something that we're doing.
It won't be in the county database, but I see you're going to have your own database, and you're going to get it coming by...
Correct, correct.
Tom Trumpy, I'm a property owner on Omaha Lake. When you go to the city council about this dock deal, you may want to get some clarity on what they can get over, what they don't can get over.
Would you, would you just get a little closer to my phone?
I just recently installed a seawall on my property. I had to buy a permit from the city to do this. When I got done, I asked the city if they were going to have an inspector. They said, we don't inspect it, it's not our duty to sense it. So why am I paying the city for permit to build a wall that they don't have the authority? They haven't yet come and inspected the seawall.
Thank you, Tom. If you'd like, we'll go out and take a look at it and ride on your boat when it's nice in the summer, and enjoy those beautiful pictures that your sweetheart takes.
If you ever.
I think we'll have an answer in just a second.
I don't have it, but it's in our stuff.
Can we look that up for Mr. Trumpy for next time and even reach out to him?
Yeah, Tom, can I look that up for you? I can't find it right now.
About the seawalls.
Off the seawalls and stuff.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commissioners?
Oh, you're taking one.
That being the case, we have an opportunity now to go into executive session. Is there a motion to have executive session tonight?
Do we need one tonight? Do we need one tonight?
I don't think so, no.
We aren't, there's no motion to have an executive session, so with that, we will bid you adieu, as they say. Oh, we adjourn, I'm sorry. We've got to have a motion to adjourn unless we're going to stay here.